Thank you.
Okay.
Reminder, we are now recording.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember New and a second by Councilmember Lauren for approval of the agenda. Ashley, you can do the roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Hi.
Mayor Cowan?
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll move on to council comments and we will start with Councilmember Lauren.
Well, it was a busy time period between our last meeting and this. I had an advancing equity meeting on the third, followed by a meeting with them other jurisdictions on the API situation that's come up in our area. On three eight, I had a tour of Kind Farms with many other people from city council. On three eleven, a Valley Clean Energy meeting. Oh, and I missed also on three eight, I had a Yolo County Transportation District meeting and a SAC Valley Division meeting. I just have a one other meeting on three eleven, the Valley Clean Energy, but what I wanted to announce was that today, there was an announcement made that for Yolo County Transportation District that Executive Director Terry Bassett, who's been serving for thirty-nine and a third years, is retiring on April second. So congratulations on that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, Mayor. On Wednesday, March tenth, attended a Zoom meeting of the Solano Air Quality Management District. On Thursday, March eleventh, I attended a Lord Peter Creek Coordinating Committee Zoom meeting. And on Monday, March fifteenth, yesterday, I had a session reviewing the agenda with the city manager, Kathleen Trapp, regarding tonight's city council meeting. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember New?
On Thursday, the fourth, I attended SECOG Land Use and Natural Resources meeting. And when I say attended, I mean Zoom for these. And then on Friday, the fifth, Winter Senior Citizens Pressure Fixtures and Equipment Meeting. On the Monday, the eighth, I had a tour of Hay Kingdom. And it was interesting being that we knew about all the fires they had. I was, my wife had been invited and said I could go along. So I saw that they constructed roads, not the smoothest roads, but there are three roads that go all the way back to the back of their property now. They've got nine fire hydrants out there, which they didn't have before. And they've spaced their new hay storage, so it's at least a hundred feet away from the next one. Now, they still have some that are closer together that were built before, but it was interesting and they talked about what they have done to try and make it safe. And so that was that. On the, that was the third and the eighth, on the twelfth, I had another senior citizen or winners, senior citizens, equipment and fixtures meeting. On the fifteenth, I had Yolo Habitat Conservancy meeting. And talk about acquiring or approving acquire, approved, approving, acquiring some property near Conway Ranch, which is near the Davis bypass. And that was interesting to see what they are planning on doing. And so sort of like the last piece that connects two pieces together, so it makes one big area. On the fifteenth, that was Habitat meeting. That was that. On the sixteenth, I met with our city manager this morning. And then at noon, one o'clock today, I attended the Cal Cities podcast about the American Rescue Plan and what's in it for our, for cities. And that was extremely interesting, lots to talk about like that. But I'll share what I know. I imagine that Jesse was there too, but I don't know that. And now I'm here at city council, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Thank you, Mayor. On March the third, I met with Chris Turkovich, as well as city manager, with a contingent of people from Vacaville. There's somebody Chris has been working with on the Downtown Business Association that they set up in Vacaville. And the person there wanted to come to Winters and see what we've done on our downtown outdoor seating area. And she also brought along several other people from Vacaville, from the city planner's office, from the chamber, from the visitor center. So there was a pretty good sized group of them coming to see what we've done in our downtown. They were very impressed by everything down there. They just asked a lot of questions on, you know, what we've been doing to get all that done. So we got definitely got a thumbs up from that group. On the fourth, I attended the staff meeting. On the eighth, we had the tour of the Kind Pharma. It's just Cannabis Grow, which is located north of town, a few miles. On the eleventh, attended the staff meeting again. And on the eleventh, I also attended the Solano Economic Development Corporation meeting. On the twelfth, they did the Winters Chamber Commerce Board meeting. The fifteenth, I met with the city manager for the agenda review. And the evening of the fifteenth, last night, we had the Winters Peter Creek Committee meeting. And for anyone, we had a little trouble with our Zoom link for that meeting. So if there's anyone out there that tried to get in and couldn't get in with the Zoom link we had first set up, we have the meeting recorded. And if it's not on the city's website yet, it will be soon.
Tomorrow.
So by tomorrow. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of things. The, on the eleventh, the VCE board meeting that I was on with Councilmember Lauren. And one, one thing I noted on, on that meeting was when they report out about the percentage of people in different communities, the different cities in Yolo County that are on the VCE, Winters sits at ninety-two percent currently. So we're the highest of all the cities, the way I understand it. So that's awesome. And then I, yesterday, I also met with the city manager to review tonight's agenda. Thank you, everybody, for all your work on the other assignments and committees. And we will move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody that is listening, that would like to speak on items which are not on tonight's agenda. Now would be the time to raise your hand and do so. Ashley, do we have any written comments or anybody with their hand up?
There were no written comments. And I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, then we will go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. Kathleen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have several items on the consent calendar. In addition to the minutes from the last council meeting, we have a professional services agreement with Telstar Instruments. That's to replace a failed variable, variable frequency drive at well two at a not to exceed value of sixteen thousand dollars. Our next item is a resolution condemning and combating racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. I also wanted to point out that this is in line with a resolution that the city council adopted in 2017, which we will also incorporate into the minutes for this meeting so that people understand that this is a continuum of community values that the city council has endorsed through the years. The following item is an extension of a professional services agreement for auditing services with Van Lant and Frankenhandel. The value of that agreement is thirty-two thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. There's also a grant deed, accepting the grant deed for dedication of right of way for the Winters Highland. That's Phase Two for Stones Throw. And then the final item is an amendment of the Conflict of Interest Code pursuant to the Political Reform Act of nineteen seventy-four. That is reviewed every two years and brought forward to the city council if there are any changes. And in this case, we're updating the list of employees or positions based on current staffing. And we're also adding two positions, the building official and the city engineer. And even though those two positions are currently contracted or being provided by consultants, they also are subject to the city's Conflict of Interest Code. And that is it for the consent calendar.
Okay. Okay, is there any questions from council?
I have a question about comments. I know that there might be comments from the public. So will there?
We'll ask.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's, if there's no questions from council, then Ashley, is there anybody with their hand up that would like to comment on the consent calendar?
Kate Ladish has her hand up.
Okay. Kate, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Cowan. Kate Ladish, four hundred Morgan Street, number twenty-one. And I'd like to voice support for the resolution condemning and combating racism, xenophobia, and intolerance against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. As City Manager Kathleen Trapp mentioned, this dovetails quite nicely with the, the statement of the resolution of, statement of community values that the council passed unanimously in twenty seventeen. So again, I just, I urge support of this, this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the consent calendar?
I am not seeing any other hands up.
Okay. All right, then we would entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion for the consent calendar and make a comment after the vote.
Very well.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lauren and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Biase. Ashley, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Hi.
Mayor Cowan?
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Councilmember Lauren?
Yes, I wanted to also obviously express my support for the resolution mentioned, but also there will be a Yolo United Against Hate event. It will be put on by the YED Spring, it's a Spring twenty twenty-one Leadership Summit, and it will be on March, sorry, I'm looking at it, twenty-fourth of this month. And sponsored by Yellow Leaders and all of the region cities are hopefully going to be there.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to some presentations. Too bad we're not in person, we could have some cake tonight. Okay, first, I think we're going to probably hear from the fire chief. This is going to be a commendation for Miguel Zergaza. Chief, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Council Mayor, members of the public, thank you for joining us tonight. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Brad Lopez. I'm the fire chief for the City of Winters Fire Department. I'm here tonight before you to recognize two individuals in our organization. And I'm going to start with Kitzia Playo, a new volunteer firefighter with us. The LNU Lightning Complex Fires devastated our region in August of twenty twenty last year. For twenty-eight days, over three hundred and sixty thousand acres charged Napa, Plano, and Yolo Counties, destroying over fourteen hundred structures, causing five injuries and five fatalities. Many of us began to learn the impacts of these fires and what they would have on our community, residents, community and our residents, and even city and city employees. Firefighter Playo, a new volunteer, voluntarily organized and led a fundraising car wash. On September thirtieth, with the help of firefighters, Winters Police Departments, and Ms. Playo's family, mother and father and her siblings, together raised more than sixty-nine hundred dollars, which would benefit and be distributed to both the Greater Winters Fire Relief Fund and to one of our own very own city employees, Christine De Guera. Tonight, I would like to acknowledge firefighter Playo for a noble contribution in organizing and leading the car wash fundraiser, providing aid and resources to fire victims of the greater Winters area. I'd like to ask Ms. Playo to the front, please. Let me make sure I got the right. This is a certificate of appreciation on behalf of the fire department, in your contributions and dedication to the community, for you knowing the fire. Thank you. Our next person I'd like to recognize has to do with our firefighter of the year for twenty twenty. To achieve selection as firefighter of the year, one is nominated by their peers in the leadership. This person should demonstrate desirable qualities of a firefighter, such as character, honor, integrity, humility, and a sheer passion to serve others. This person comes to me with no surprise in exceeding these qualities and these attributes. Miguel Zergaza started as a Winters Fire Cadet in two thousand and fifteen and transitioned to the role of a volunteer firefighter in two thousand and seventeen, after graduating from the cadet program. Miguel has been described by others as hardworking, dependable, exceeding all expectations, and conducts himself professionally. He is also described as quiet, not one to stand out in a crowd. But where he is most notable is his genuine passion to be a part of a team, driven to perfection and mastering his craft as a professional firefighter. Mr. Zergaza has dedicated over a thousand hours in staffing shifts, training, responding to emergencies, and deploying on strike team assignments in twenty twenty. Some of the things that Miguel shares, and I quote, "Throughout my experience as a cadet and resident volunteer, I have been able to immerse myself into the fire service and develop many skills that have helped me in my personal and professional life. One thing that stood out to me is how the organization always works as a team and tries to help everyone, help everyone else. Being a part of the department that serves the community I grew up in has been rewarding in every aspect. And I look forward to continuing my service with the Winters Fire Department." Mayor, mayor, excuse me, Mayor, council members, staff, and the public. I do want to congratulate our twenty twenty firefighter of the year, Miguel Zergaza.
What did you just do?
I didn't do anything.
Okay, I think we're going to get Chief Miller. There you go.
You got muted there for a second.
Yep. You're, you're with us.
All right. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager, and members of the Winters community. I'd also like to welcome some VIPs, if you will. They are joining us online. I believe we have online retired chief Sergio Gateras, retired chief Bruce Muramoto, retired chief Steve Godden, and I don't know if he was able to make it, but semi-retired chief Joe Crimes. Usually around this time, we have our annual public safety consulting awards presentation dinner, obviously because of COVID, we weren't able to do that. So I do appreciate the opportunity to do this in front of the city council. We also recognize new employees in front of the city council. It's been our tradition, at least through my time, and I believe long before I was here, and we do a brief introduction to the council, and we do a ceremony of swearing in, and then we do a bachelor ceremony. So when I call your name, if you will please come up and join me, we're going to start with the introductions and swearing in, Officer Kyle Shadman. Get embarrassed, you get to stay up front, so either left or right. All right, it's my pleasure to introduce you, Officer Kyle Shadman. He was hired by the Winters Police Department and a member of twenty twenty. Kyle was born in Southern California and moved to the Sacramento area very early in life. He attended high school in Roseville, where he played football, and had a strong interest in auto shop. Upon graduating from high school, he attended Wyatt Tech in Laramie, Wyoming, where he's studying diesel technology, and then worked as a transport refrigeration mechanic for over seven years. In twenty fifteen, Kyle and his wife opened a care home for developmentally disabled adults, and then opened a second home in twenty seventeen to help individuals who are on the autism spectrum or require more assistance. In twenty eighteen, Kyle made the decision to pursue a career in law enforcement. He entered the San Joaquin Delta College Police Academy and was elected to class treasurer. He graduated, graduated the academy in March of twenty twenty and was awarded the True Grid Award by the recruit training officers. Kyle and his wife have two young sons. He's an avid Red Sox fan. And he enjoys spending time with his family, traveling to Boston, Disneyland, weightboarding, and prospet. Kyle's also started working on his bachelor's degree at Humphreys University. Please join me in welcoming Officer Kyle Shadman. I believe CSO Andrea Gonzalez is a way of training, and I believe she's joining us online, but I can't tell from here. So CSO Andrea Gonzalez joined us in, actually, long before December of twenty twenty, but she's been with us for several years as a police cadet. She joined our cadet program in twenty seventeen. She promoted to cadet sergeant in twenty eighteen, and then cadet lieutenant in twenty nineteen. Andrea graduated from Winters High School in May of twenty nineteen as a salutatorian and is currently pursuing a bachelor's degree in criminology and criminal justice studies at Sonoma State University, and she is tracking to graduate in twenty twenty-two. So I hope that she's online, but if you don't, please join me in welcoming Andrea remotely. Officer Brandon Kenny. Officer Brandon Kenny was hired by the Winters Police Department in February of twenty twenty-one. Brandon grew up in Vail and was first introduced to law enforcement by his older brother, who was a Napa police officer at the time. After riding along with his brother, Brandon applied and became a police explorer with the Vail Police Department. Upon graduating from high school, Brandon attended Solano Community College and then Sacramento State University, graduating with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. During his college years, Brandon also worked as a paid police cadet with the Vail Police Department. In twenty fourteen, Brandon began a career working in asset protection management for two large retail companies. He held a variety of roles, including district organized retail theft investigator and district trainer. Brandon wanted return to law enforcement, and he enrolled in the Napa Valley College Police Academy Recertification Course, graduating from the course in March of twenty twenty. Brandon and his fiancee are due to be married this summer. They enjoy camping, skiing, going to sporting events, and country concerts when that's permitted again, and taking weekend getaways to the mountain. You let that walk you on the beach. Oh, yeah. So please join me in welcoming Officer Brandon Kenny. At this time, if I could ask our city clerk, Ashley, to please administer the oath of office. Ashley, are you there?
Thank you, why, do we have a power drinks in there?
Yeah.
So that means why is it?
Ashley, are you there?
If you'd like, I can assist. I'm not quite sure. Ashley, would you like me to assist? Oh, we may have lost Ashley. Okay, well, if you're both, raise your right hands and repeat after me. I say your names. Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations and welcome to the City of Winters.
It's a tradition in law enforcement that upon being sworn in as officer, we do a badge pinning ceremony. And this is done by a person of the officer's choosing, usually somebody special to them, starting with Officer Shadman. All right, you guys can have a seat, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, we have some commendations. Again, this is in lieu of our annual award ceremony. Several years ago, the Winters Police Department started a program to formally recognize exemplary employees. This is, this is an opportunity to give formal commendations to two of our officers. That'd be Officer, I'm sorry, Sergeant Kelly McCoy and Officer Darian Quado. They both come up here and please join me. And I don't know, do I have Ashley back yet by any chance? Is Ashley still MIA?
I think she's having trouble with her connection.
All right, we had a video clip, but we will forego that, and I'll just have to describe the incident.
Oh, I, here she is. Video clip. Sorry. Video clip. Sorry, I, my computer keeps freezing and I can hear you guys, but you can't hear me when I'm responding. So let me pull that clip up for you.
We got, we're almost there. Let me, let me describe it first and then I'll have you. We just lost you. Unfortunately, we lost Officer Quaido back to the police department in January, but we're delighted that he could come up and join us today. On November 22nd at 2020, at approximately 6:35 PM, Sergeant Kelly McCoy and Officer Darian Quaido received a call that a male subject armed with a knife was outside the lobby of the police department. Which was closed at that time. Sergeant McCoy, who was on duty, and Officer Quaido, who had just started his shift, were inside the police department and contacted the subject from inside the facility. Thankfully, this placed the lobby doors between them and the subject because the subject was armed with an approximately three inch knife. And began repeatedly yell if he wanted to kill the officers, stabbing and kicking the glass doors to the lobby. This barrier allowed Sergeant McCoy and Officer Quaido, the option to begin trying to negotiate with the subject and deescalate the situation. While awaiting emergency assistance from Yellow County Sheriff's Department and Solano County Sheriff's Department. However, approximately four and a half minutes of trying to talk with the subject to get him to disarm himself with the knife. The subject then drew a handgun from his front pocket and briefly displayed it, but he did not point it directly at the officers. To illustrate how dynamic and unexpected a situation can unfold and confront law enforcement officers and how dire this particular incident was and it further escalated. We grabbed a short video clip from. Play that. Alright, okay, we'll jump you there and we lost the audio, but let me fill it in. Off blank, he's got a gun. Edited it out. I think everyone can appreciate had the officers been out and about on patrol at that time and approached the subject from outside the lobby. The situation would have in all likelihood turned out much differently. Upon hearing the sirens of the Yellow County Sheriff's Department units coming into the area, the subject threw the gun into nearby bushes and he fled on foot north on North Main Street, still armed with a knife. Due to the imminent danger he posed to the public, Sergeant McCoy and Officer Quaido pursued the subject on foot. Subject turned and fled east on Astor Way, next street up here from us, where Officer Quaido attempted to subdue him with a taser, but the taser was ineffective. Officer Quaido physically engaged the subject despite the subject being armed with a knife. However, the subject was able to break free from Officer Quaido and continued to flee further into the neighborhood. Due to the immediate danger the subject posed to the officers and to the public, an arriving Yellow County deputy used his vehicle to stop the suspect. Literally uses vehicle, in other words. Because of the deputy's actions, the subject lost all the knife and the disruption of his flight allowed Officer Quaido to again physically reengage the subject. The subject continued to resist and successfully handcuffed and then continued to resist even further even after while being handcuffed. Both Sergeant McCoy and Officer Quaido suffered minor injuries during the altercation. It was found to be a replica Glock pistol. Due to current events across our nation and the intense scrutiny of law enforcement, I think we can all appreciate the gravity of this incident. And the many ways how it could have turned out much different for the subject, for our officers and for our community. Due to their actions of that night, the Winters Police Department is recognizing Sergeant Kelly McCoy and Officer Darian Quaido with formal commendations. I'll start with Sergeant McCoy's commendation. Present that to you. Sergeant McCoy's commendation reads, "In recognition of your conduct during a dynamic situation involving an armed subject in the City of Winters, California on November 22nd, 2020. Your situal awareness, tactical communication, de-escalation techniques and overall command and management of the event contributed greatly to the successful outcome of the incident." Presented in front of this Winter City Council, March 16th of 2021. Officer Quaido's commendation? Officer Quaido's commendation reads, "In recognition of your conduct during a dynamic situation involving an armed subject in the City of Winters, California on November 22nd, 2020. During your tactical, your tactical communication and de-escalation techniques helped mitigate the risk posed to your fellow officers and to the public. Furthermore, your immediate action by giving pursuit then physically engaging the subject without hesitation protected the public for potential harm. Presented in front of this Winter City Council, March 16th, 2021." Alright, my next presentation is to recognize the 2020 Winters Police Department Officer of the Year. It's with great pleasure to call up Officer Thomas Letterman. Firmly introduced in front of the city council through the COVID, but we did have a special ceremony that I know several council members and members of the community were able to join us. Officer Letterman was selected by his peers as the 2020 Winters Police Department Officer of the Year. 2020 was challenging to say the least, but Officer Letterman was nominated by two supervisors who cited the following about his specific work performance that made him stand out during the year. He was appointed cadet advisor and established lesson plans for the cadets emphasizing post lead or learning domains and the value of accountability. He was involved in a mental health backpack program. He became aware of a program, engaged the vendor to receive a sample and then made proposal to obtain the backpack for all patrol units. Which was obtained through local donations. He organized packets for homeless outreach and mental health services. In their letters of nomination supervisors, supervisors noted, quote, "Officer Letterman comes to work each day with a positive attitude and ready to get to work. He accepts criticism well and continually wants to improve himself. He is friendly and approachable with citizens and on calls. He's a team player, works well with others and is always willing to help his partners out. He always wants to do a good job. He shows tremendous passion for the job, the department and wants to step up and do more things." So I have actually several things to present to you as far as being recognized as Officer of the Year. Versus your certificate suitable for framing. We don't need to, because we got job plaque also. And for the public, I know obviously far away from the camera, but it's Winters, Winters Police Department 2020 Officer of the Year, Officer Thomas Letterman. In recognition of your dedication and service to the Winters Police Department. We have a perpetual plaque in the police department and Officer Letterman was added to the plaque and that will be hung on the continuation. I forgot how many years it goes back, goes back many years. And then finally, this is your bar ribbon for your uniform to represent Officer of the Year. Good job and congratulations, well deserved. Okay, and then I guess wait for the next agenda item.
Alright, thank you Chief Miller. Thank you Chief Lopez. And congratulations to all those that were recognized tonight. And we want to thank all the police and fire personnel for, for all their hard work and dedication every day for the City of Winters. Thanks, thanks to all of you guys very much and gals. Alright. Next, we will move on to some special presentations for some retirees we've had recently. First, we're gonna recognize Carla Ferguson for her 30 years of service to the City of Winters. I think Carla's with us tonight and I'll go ahead and read her proclamation. It's from the city council, City of Winters honoring Carla Ferguson for her 30 years of service to the City of Winters. On January 29th, 1990, Carla began her career with the City of Winters as a part-time clerk and typist. She was hired full-time as records clerk in 1991. Promoted to record supervisor in 1995. And served the City of Winters as the administrative coordinator for public safety since January 9th, 2012. And whereas over the past 30 years, Carla Ferguson has been an integral part of the Winters Police Department, Fire Department and Fire Protection District. And she's also collaborated and helped implement numerous emerging technologies. Over her 30 years of service, including a records management system. And numerous computer information programs for the benefit and efficiency of the Winters Police Department and Winters Fire Department. And whereas through Carla Ferguson's exceptional organizational skills and unrivaled dedication. Helped develop and effectively manage the Winters Police Department and Winters Fire Department annual budgets. As well as conducted specialized reporting requirements monthly and annually. And whereas Carla Ferguson was also an involved member of the Winters community for many years, participating, supporting and volunteering. In Winters Little League, Future Farmers of America, American Youth Soccer Organization and Junior Warriors Football. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Winters extends to Carla Ferguson. Its most sincere appreciation for her service and dedication to the Winters community. And be it further proclaimed that the City of Winters extends its best wishes to Carla in her future endeavors. This is passed and adopted on the 16th day of March, 2021. Thank you so much Carla Ferguson. Don't go away. Thank you. We have a special guest tonight that would like to say a few words for Carla. And that'd be our former city manager, John Dunlevy.
And Mayor and Council, first of all, thank you. I, I know the men and women of Winters, ED and Fire are there. I'd like to have a chance to talk about Carla a little bit. Tonight I see that there are five chiefs that she served that are all online. Chief Godin, Muramoto, Gutierrez, Crines and Miller. I think universally they will tell you there was a reason why they were successful and it was because of Carla. She was a critical element of any iteration of 911 system for Yellow County and her 30 years, she had an influence unlike most in the county. I will tell you that she was a confidant to the people of, of the Winters PD. She was there in some of the toughest situations in the history of Winters PD. And she always helped in the management of the PD with a lot of confidence. She brought a lot of credibility. For those of us who represent Winters throughout Yellow County. I will tell you that the cachet that we had in anything when it came to public safety was because we, Carla, are our team. Mostly I can tell you that Carla is really, has been the common linkage in the advancement of the Winters PD. When you, when you talk to those five chiefs that she worked with, Carla was always that calming influence. She took care of all the back office things that enabled the chiefs to do things. So Carla, congratulations. I really wish you the best. And what a difference. If you want to know, you know, the best part about Winters, Winters is one of the safest places. And there are people who work behind the scenes to do that. And Carly, congratulations. I wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you, John.
Before we do any more comments, we do have one other presentation for us. If I may proceed with that.
Sure.
So Chief Lopez and I are gonna kind of tag team on this one. This is a joint resolution from the Honorable Celia M Aguirre Curry, who was our mayor for many years. As well as with the Honorable Bill Dodd. It's a joint resolution to Carla Ferguson. It reads, "Whereas Carla Ferguson is retiring as administrative coordinator for the Winters Police and Fire Departments after a stellar career of nearly 31 years in the City of Winters. And it is appropriate at this time to highlight her achievements during her years of service and extend to her a heartfelt thank you for God willing. And whereas, beginning her career with the city as a part-time clerk typist in January of 1990. Carla Ferguson became a records clerk with the Winters Police Department in August 1991 and promoted to record supervisor in July 1995. And as her career expanded, she received pre-classification as a records and information systems supervisor in July 2002. Before her final promotion to administrative coordinator for both the Winters Police and Fire Departments in January 12th and.
And her amiable and attentive managerial style played a large role in facilitating the timely completion of all projects. And whereas exceptionally organized. 1990, the since 1990. Winters chapter of American Youth Soccer Organization and the National FFA Organization. And whereas the contributions that Carla Ferguson has made to the people of Winters have been invaluable. And she has made a lasting impression on those individuals with whom she has been associated. Now therefore it be.
Resolved by Assemblymember Cecilia M Aguirre Curry and Senator Bill Dodd that Carla Ferguson be commended for its sustained record of professional service with the City of Winters. And extended sincere best wishes in all new endeavors. Members Resolution Number 276 dated 16th day of March and signed by our Assemblymember in State Senate. Well, no, you're not off the look. I think there's more accolades.
Is there somebody else? I see Sergio raising his hand. Can you unmute yourself, Sergio? Go ahead.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving us opportunity. I just wanted to spread. Some amazing things that Carla has done for us as all of us have been chiefs and being present today. Carla, you, you are an amazing person. You were also a good friend and supported myself. And of course, I would say, speaking on behalf of the other chiefs, the same for them too. You know, we're excited for you and you know, being that you're now retired and you'll be able to enjoy. The qualities of life that you've been hoping for and we just want to wish you all the best. Thank you for all you've done for personally and I appreciate you. I wish I could be there to give you a big. And Camille says, as we both share the same feeling about you.
Alright, thank you, chief. Alright, was there anybody else that was gonna speak about Carla? Okay, Bruce, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, I just, I just want to share with the group. When I became chief in Winters, I talked to Chief Godin. I said, you know, gee, Steve. You've been a really successful chief for all these years in Winters. I said, how did you do it? He says, he says, Bruce. There's only two things you have to do to be a successful chief in Winters and at least two things. I said, and what are those? He said, keep Carla happy and never let her pay for lunch. And so with that, I did my best to do the best job for the community and I tried my best to keep Carla happy and indeed I never let her pay for lunch. And Carla, I echo what the other chiefs have said and Sergio has said. You were wonderful. You made my career in Winters so successful in terms of your help and your, your guidance. I really appreciated it. I can't tell you how much. I mean, I think I told you how much, but I just want to welcome you to the club, the retirement club. And I tell you what, this is gonna be the best job you ever had. So anyway, lots of success. Please stay safe and healthy in the future and congratulations.
Thank you, chief. Alright, Carla, would you like to say a few words?
I'm just very honored and humbled to work for all of the chiefs and all of the officers and Gail and all of the city employees, the council. I'm just very honored and humbled to work for all of the chiefs and all of the officers and Gail and all of the city employees, the council. John Don Levy, it's, it's been a ride and I had a great time. I'm a loving retirement.
Hey, thank you very much. Congratulations, Carla. All right. Next up, we have another proclamation for retiree and that would be Tracy Jensen for her thirty years of service to the city of winners. All right, I'm gonna read this proclamation for Tracy here. Well, for her fifteen years of service to the city of winners. On December nineteenth, two thousand and five, Tracy Jensen began her career with the city of winners as records clerk in administrative services department. And in this role, Tracy coordinated community center facilities, rentals, assisted with providing recreation programs for the community, managed contract documents, provided front counter service to the public and supported human resources and city clerk functions. And whereas Tracy was reclassified as a management analysis in July of two thousand and fourteen, taking on additional duties in the administrative services department, serving as administrative assistant to the city manager, John Dunlevy, and assisting human resources with employee benefits. She also continued supporting recreation and city clerk activities. And in July of two thousand and eighteen, Tracy was appointed city clerk and records and information manager, following the retirement of the previous city clerk. Continuing to assist city manager Dunlevy in city administration. And whereas Tracy retired from the city of winners in December, two thousand and twenty one, after fifteen years of dedicated service to the organization and the community. And whereas Tracy looks forward to spending more time with her grandkids, traveling to Oregon to visit her parents and exploring the coast with her husband and their camper. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of winners extends to Tracy Jensen its most sincere appreciation for her service and dedication to the winners community and be it further proclaimed that the city of winners extends its best wishes to Tracy and all her future adventures and travels. Congratulations, Tracy, and thank you so much for all you've done for the last fifteen years for the city of winners.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you to the city council and the city winners for this proclamation. The fifteen years I spent working in winners was a great experience and one that I will remember fondly. I got the chance to work with a lot of great people, including city manager, John Don Levy and especially city clerk Nancy Mills, who served for thirty plus years, who mentored me throughout my career. Winters is a very special place and I count myself very lucky to have spent the last fifteen years there. Thank you, council for this honor and this is my first city council meeting in three months.
Oh boy, lucky you.
You bet. I, I enjoyed it.
All right. Well, your former boss would like to say a few words as well. John.
So you know that the best part, Trace, is you can go and be one of those four hundred people that they allow into a Giants game now. I, I always tell people that I was very blessed because I got to work with some amazing people. And the one thing that they all figured out is that it really was them. And Tracy was one of those people. I truly believe that Tracy will get to go straight through the pearly gates of heaven because the reality is that she served purgatory, working outside my office for as many years as she did. Not an easy task, except for all the Giants talk that we had. I will share that Tracy really is that last connection to some of the most special people that we had in the winners organization. People like Gloria Marion and also working with Nancy. From the downstairs counter to becoming the city clerk, Tracy really did earn it. And she was the, the person who really showed her value of becoming an asset to the city. The one thing that I think everybody will quickly knows is that we are grinders. We always had to make, you know, literally that silk purse out of a sow's ear oftentimes. And that was because we worked really hard and Tracy was part of that. To understand Tracy is just to look up the word commitment in dictionary and you'll see her smiling face right there. Tracy, like it or not, brought us into the modern era of all the Zoom nonsense that we did last year. To hear her and I screaming at each other, trying to figure it out was quite a task. I really am very sincere. I'm grateful for the people that I worked with and especially with Tracy. I, I was blessed with working in a very dynamic organization. I like to tell folks that I, I worked in a, a woman-run organization. Tracy, Carla, Nancy, Shelly, Carol, they really did run the place and I was basically just the window dressing in the, in the good looks and charm that brought it all home. Really for Carol, for, for Tracy and for Carla. I sincerely wish them the best in their retirement. Tracy, we, we will get to that point where we'll be able to get back together and maybe you and I will go on a cruise together or something, but Tracy, congratulations on your service. The city's been blessed with, with you and, and wish you the best. Take care.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Thank you again, Tracy, for all that you've done.
Sorry, Kate Lattish has her hand up.
Go ahead, Kate. You're on, there you go.
Thank you, Mary Cohen. Kate Lattish, four hundred Morgan Street, number twenty-one, an address that Tracy has typed a lot because of dealing with all of the public comments. And so I, so Tracy, I, I'm so sad that you've retired for, 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 you know, for all of us. It has been such a joy to work with you. It's, it's and I'm excited to work with the current team as well. I apologize. That came out wrong. But what I'm saying is that it's been really, it was really a pleasure to work with you. And whether it was you shepherding through, making sure all the different forms for everything were happening in the right way or taking care of all of the dynamics of the public facing, as I'm sure administrative dynamics related to the different meetings. But I'd especially like to highlight all the work that you did with the, with the pool and with the aquatics programs. That I, I really appreciate having the opportunity to work with you on that and appreciate your problem solving and different ways of, of thinking about how to make things work so it could work for the most people as well as the city organization. Thank you so much and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Kate.
Yeah, thank you, Kate. And if you've ever been to a winter city council meeting, you have to know Kate's address and Tina Loudon's address. It's a requirement. Thanks again, Tracy. We really appreciate all you've done for all these years. Thank you.
Good to see you.
You too. Thank you. All right. We don't have any discussion items tonight. All we have is all this fun with congratulating everybody. So that's the kind of meeting we like to have. So now we're gonna move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do have one update that I'd like to share with the council and the community. This afternoon, I participated in a webinar that was hosted by the League of California Cities about the American Rescue Plan and this is the bill that cleared both houses and was signed by President Biden, providing support to Americans, but also most importantly for us, to, to cities for the first time since the pandemic struck. And so I wanted to share that the city of winters is eligible through a non-competitive grant for approximately one point three million dollars that we can utilize in several allocations for four primary sort of broadly defined areas related to the economic impacts associated with COVID nineteen and the pandemic. So we're really excited to be able to access this money and this funding. We'll be working, obviously with our financial services director, Shelley Gunby, and with the city council and with the community to provide some recommendations on some opportunities and how to utilize this money. Not only for the benefit of the city of winters as an agency, but also the community as a whole to help address some of the economic impacts that the community suffered during the course of the pandemic. So we'll have more information as the Treasury Department issues its guidance in order to, the guidance will be more clear in terms of eligible uses and how we can access the, the funding. But it is an opportunity for the city of winters to leverage some pretty significant funding for the benefit of the community. So coming on the heels of a very, very difficult year, I think, you know, we're certainly thrilled to be able to have this, this funding and and we'll share more with the community and the council as we move forward.
All right. Great. Thank you. I think maybe we should get ahold of Davis and see if we can do a rock, paper, scissors and, and trade them for their amount. Cause I think theirs is like twelve million, but.
Proportionately, we're thrilled to have what we, what we've been allocated. So I will not be looking to gift horse to the mouth, though.
For sure.
So that's my update for the evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other comments from council before we close the meeting? Hearing none, we will close the meeting at seven thirty-three. Take that, Davis.
Well done.
Night, everyone. Good night.
All right.